Okay.
Will this mean the order? Do we have a forum?
Yes, we sure do. All members are present. The notice of the meeting was posted by June 23.
Thank you very much. So I guess we'll start with the workshop regarding the zoning and planning commission responsibilities, ordinances, and duties. Okay, who wants to?
So I can go ahead and just open it up. So essentially, you know, as requested, you all have requested that we do kind of a workshop as far as responsibilities of planning, zoning, and just some of the duties that are required. And Jessica did the honor here of setting up the little handbook that you have in your packets.
Thank you.
And really, we just wanted to kind of open it up for discussion. Some of these changes would definitely have to be kept to approve. But typically, this is some of the requirements that you'll find for for planning. And I definitely would recommend discussing this again after the building officials have started. That way he could provide input. You know, the whole commission can give thoughts and then he can put something together for council. I can tell you that this would be part of a much bigger project of overall ordinance. Just kind of ironing out what boards and commissions specifically, the planning and zoning commission being very important. What they do and how they do it. Do you have anything to say?
Well, mainly just the the handbook that I put together is preliminary, pretty much what Gio was saying in the sense that it's a rough draft. And there are things that are missing out of it, mainly because those need to be addressed later after we have a building official and it's a little bit more in in detail. This is very basic. And so I tried to keep it as basic and as small for you guys to absorb the very basic parts of planning and zoning. And then as we get those basic things down, we can add the other things in that are not in this packet. And hopefully, we can just amend the handbook later, kind of like the way we do an employee handbook. We'll go back and we'll add things in as we get to that point. But right now, focusing on the elementary things of planning and zoning and understanding, especially since we have a lot of new people on the board, it's a good time to have like process of procedures and the understanding. So when you guys do get replaced, they'll get a handbook and they'll know a little bit more about what their duties are and understand it and it'll also be posted online. So anybody that wanted the job would kind of know what they're putting themselves into. And so I think going forward, of the other boards and commissions, that's our plan is to like make it a larger thing. So everybody that gets on on a board understands what that role entails. So that's kind of our goal for as far as seeing employees go.
So I've actually been putting together a boards and commissions handbook. And we are going to start an overhaul of the ordinance, but we felt that the planning and zoning commission specifically needed their own. So.
There's been a lot of people in the community asking, what does the planning and zoning do? What is their duties?
I thought that was really funny. I was like, do they know that we're doing this? It was kind of ironic. He was asking about it. We're gonna workshop ours. Maybe they know. I don't know.
It took everything out of me to say something like.
Yeah, I don't know if it'd be the best time, the first time you guys went over to have a lot of people. I mean, they're obviously welcome, but for you to just understand it probably just as better for you guys to be together doing it. So there is, there is a lot of information and you guys have a big role in the way that our community is going to look in the future. So it's actually really a fun job. And I have some things that I've noticed. You know, I wanted to print out a zoning map so that you guys could see it, but I definitely recommend you guys going online. If you go to the boards and commissions under government and go to the planning and zoning, and they'll have your names on who's who's on their the chair. They'll, there's a zoning map there and you can open it up and kind of look at what the city looks like right now. And that's, that map is actually dated 2013. So it needs to be updated. And also with that, that's what we're working off of right now as a city, but to have that other zoning map that would be considered a future plan. And that's a part of the handbook is that's kind of like a creative thing. Like, I know that you wanted a historical, you're working with David Hale of that. That's something that we would work on in this type of setting to to put those things into place on the zoning map. So it's actually a fun thing if you wanted it to be. And so other than the seriousness part of like variances and especially its permanence and things like that, the actual zoning part is kind of new. And so I think it's exciting always.
Well, I thought it was extremely helpful.
Yeah, it's long overdue on doing this.
Yeah, it really is.
I agree.
Good job.
I thought the handbook was very helpful. I appreciate it.
Yeah, I don't know if you have any questions. I mean, there are, there is a little bit of more. I mean, I pulled some stuff off of the Texas. Because a lot of the things that that we have isn't just ordinance space. It's actually part of the Texas government code. And so, and we can't change that. We can only make it more strict. So. And our ordinance is online. I would definitely recommend spending a little bit of time on like especially the residential, commercial, and industrial. What's allowable in those areas and understanding them a little bit better and then using the zoning map. I mean, that's a part of a workshop that we could do. So I mean, like, I don't know how in detail you wanted a workshop to be for understanding. But like when we get a special use permit and understanding where that's going to go in our community, where it's going to be in our zoning, how close it is to residential. And we live here. And so when we drive by it, we know because it's off of such and such street. But based off of our zoning map, that's really our job to make sure that it's going to be placed in a proper place and the foreseeable growth of the future. So.
And when do we expect the the building official to start? Eighteenth of July.
Okay, super excited. It'd be nice to have some help.
And they'll be located here in Alpine or?
From what I understand, yes. I'm not quite sure. Or is no one?
He already submitted an application for your services.
Right here.
So that would be in city law.
What's his name?
Andrew.
Devaney.
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 Andrew Devaney?
Devaney.
Devaney, sorry. Any other questions anyone might have discussed?
Thanks for putting it all together. Now, lots of information to go over. And you said this is basically just a draft document at this point?
It is a draft. I still need to go over and add more things to it in the future, but we can't, we can't submit it to anything yet. We have to have a little more time to go over it. I, it's just kind of an idea, you guys having something in your hands physically to look at. And then if you do feel like there's something that you don't understand, or if there's something you want to add in, or you know, we can, that's your guys' decision on what you guys want to do. We can add more to it. We can remove some of it. It's just something for you guys to to look at and, you know.
One example of why we would need more time is the comprehensive plan and all of the items under that section. That would actually be a section that we want passed by ordinance, which of course would, all of this would need to be approved by city council. And then again, the building official, once he's here, will want to make sure that he doesn't have any recommendations. So I, I wouldn't see too much traction in the next two months, but we, your feedback is welcome. If you want to reach out to me or Jess, you know, if you have any feedback.
If you want to add a section in, or I mean, it's really up to you, but like I said, there are things like the board of adjustments. That's something that we do need, but we don't have one. So I couldn't put that information in here. Technically, we should have one in for our, that our adopted code for building codes. So we don't have one of those. We have and so that's something that in the ordinance needs to be corrected and we can't put that in this packet because it's not something we have right now. So like long term goals, there's things that need to be added into this packet, but we don't have them currently in play. So I can't add them in here. And so for that, like, there's going to be other things added to it with time as we go through and we with the new building official hopefully refine that ordinance and get things.
That will definitely be a problem. We actually used to have a board of adjustments and it's a quasi judicial board, meaning they can make their own decisions separate from the city council. And for some reason, we changed it to building and standards commission. So I think there'd be a lot of conversation trying to end with that again, whether or not we should. I mean, those ordinances are just pretty.
Yeah.
So where did you pull the information on the the video game?
So that one was actually submitted by Armit. He requested that that be on the agenda. He reached out to Odessa.
Well, would you like me to discuss it?
Sure.
Okay, so, so for the last four or five months, I've been talking with our fellow zoning and planning boards in El Paso, Odessa, Midland, Curville, San Antonio, to see what they, what their experiences are with these gaming businesses and how they were regulating them. Because I know we, a lot of us had kind of uncomfortable. We don't want to be like moral police is telling people who can and cannot run a business, right? And so I asked them for their guidance of what they were experiencing. And Odessa Midland, they were having a lot of problems with these games, gaming businesses. A lot of them were being raided on according to the mayor of Odessa on a weekly basis. And San Antonio seemed to have a better grip on it. And so I asked them for copies of their ordinances, what seemed to work. And the two you have in front of you from Odessa Midland seem to be, at least they made the most sense to me. Now, the third question we had was determining how many games we should have for different businesses. And I know right now we've said, let's have 10. But what San Antonio and Odessa decided to do, they don't have an ordinance yet, but what they're deciding to do, and I wanted us to share was in the case of Odessa, there they want the the fire marshal to do a safety inspection of the premises. And after the fire marshal does a safety inspection, then they will determine how many machines could be in a business. That way, if a business space is big enough, maybe they get more than 10. If it's smaller, vice versa, right? In San Antonio, they're having the building inspector do a safety inspection and the building inspector will decide how many games would be safe to have in a given area. So I thought that was a pretty good idea. It's flexible. And at the same time, the people who spend the money to have this business and and put in an application, they can't say that they're being restricted in their business. And so I wanted all to discuss it, think about it. Maybe we can use their ordinances as a guide for ourselves. And like I said, their idea for having inspections, they don't have a written ordinance. Maybe we could do that if that idea appeals to the commissioners here.
When you say they were being raided constantly, what what was the?
Well, according to the mayor in Odessa, there was a lot of problems going on. They're being raided for drugs and for prostitution and other illegal activity. There is also actual gaming gambling going on at a lot of these businesses. So that's why they were speaking with all our counterparts. They're trying to come up with uniform ordinances across the state. So that pretty much anywhere you go, you know what to expect. And the, and in case of San Antonio, they're hoping that with this uniformity, then any illegal activity would be easier for the police to take care of, leaving alone the legal legally run businesses. And I like that idea that that's pretty good. And so that's why I wanted you all to read them and an idea if you, if you agree, if you want to take any changes or go along with it, that's fine.
Did y'all have any other feedback on handbook?
No, I need to read it. I need to spend more time.
And I know that you didn't have much time, but it is, we wanted to get it out there. And again, I wouldn't even recommend it coming back for another month or two, at least until the new building official has been able to read it. I mean, but if you do have any feedback, please email me or email Jess. Anybody else have anything?
The only thing, I'll look at the zoning map, but can you, is that downloadable as a video?
Yes, it is. If you go to the city of Alpine's website and you find the planning and zoning commission, it'll actually has a blue hyperlink there, alternate it, have you can print it from there or save it onto your computer. And you can zoom in on it.
And I, I haven't read through the whole thing and I'm not sure if this actually falls within what what falls under our our umbrella, but one of the things that has come up recently, some folks have asked me about Airbnbs and vacation rentals within residential areas, especially when you know, it's quite busy in areas. So and I'm not sure what, how that.
So essentially, it's the conditional use, special use permit process that allows them. Essentially, the the way that the ordinance was written is that's on your need to be, to conform to any of the zones is to have a special user condition, which permit approved. And the city did receive legal advice that really that we couldn't deny them. Not initially. Initially, they'd have to be approved. And then through like enforcement mechanisms, for example, many complaints or many issues in the neighborhood, et cetera, revoke the permit that way. So.
What about, I know, I think Taos, New Mexico is different, always different state. They have a limit on how many they can have in their town, in their city. Are we allowed to house that?
I don't think so.
No, like we have a limit of four, whatever this, we have a limit of like 100 Airbnbs. We can't do that.
I, I don't think so. You know.
I mean, that would be smart because we don't have any rentals here.
Our previous attorney Sandy Wilson, there's a big case, the Tare V City of Austin, which essentially found that it affects a person's right to property and what they can do.
And that's a part of your package.
So and Rod Ponton, our current attorney, agreed. So that's where we're at.
Yeah, I read some stuff on that, from the legality. Just not much you can do about it.
Yeah. And, and yeah, if it's in the ordinance already, and the state of Texas is obviously different than the state of New Mexico. So, but I thought that was smart because the problem that we're running into Alpine is we have a lot of cute air humidists, but too many. We have way too many, to the point where anybody that's coming into town that wants an affordable rental, it's not available. I mean, it's just not there. You can't find a decent rental here. And anything that is available is really not in great shape or it's really expensive. So long term rentals don't really exist in Alpine right now. They've all been turned into short term.
The complaints you've been receiving, are they mainly for people living in residential areas?
Living in residential areas and then through the excess traffic and noise associated with it. So you know, oh, go ahead and say, just louder vehicles and then sort of late night parties. So.
Well, I highly recommend that they reach out to the police if there's noise complaints. So they could definitely reach out to us here or just with complaints about parking.
Okay.
You could see what they have on file for the parking plan. Generally, from what I see, they all have designated parking. So you know, areas that aren't home street. And I just wanted to quickly say that we have a whole section and we can go over this miscellaneous stuff, but if we could just stick to this as a workshop for now.
Okay.
Anybody else have anything about the workshop?
No, no, like I said, it looks really great. So I was able to read over it a little bit over the weekend and then last night before I left El Paso.
And if any of you guys need help navigating how to look up on the ordinance, anything, you can always reach out to Gio or myself and we can help you figure it out. Just because the ordinance online is a little interesting. It definitely needs to be updated. That's all I can say. But if you're having a hard time figuring it out, like the zones and what you're looking for and trying to find information as you're doing your homework with things that are going to come in and learning how to use those avenues to find the answers that you're looking for, I'm more than happy to help with whatever it is that you need.
Any other questions or comments? So then we'll adjourn and then get on with the regular scheduled meeting. Joe?
Yes.
Okay.
You just called a regular meeting to order this.
Okay, so I adjourned the workshop agenda. And now I call the regular meeting order. All the comments?
We don't have anybody here and we have not received anything for public comment today.
Okay, public hearings? None? Okay, then approval of minutes for March 28, 2022. Any commissioners, would you like to change anything on the minutes? Or would you like to prove as is?
Yeah, are they in this packet? Are they? Okay, Megan. Yes.
Was that the last time we met?
Yes.
It seems so.
What happened in the last three months?
Okay, is there anything anyone would like to change on the minutes? Can I get a motion then to accept minutes as is?
I'll make a motion to accept the March 28, 2022 regular meeting minutes.
Okay, I have a motion. Do we have a second?
All second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. All those in favor of approving the minutes for March 28, 2022, regular meeting, please indicate by saying aye. All opposed, same day, ayes have it. Okay, discussion items. A discussion between commissioners and city staff regarding procedural items, questions, and or recent planning and zoning related items.
And so y'all can, at this point, you know, ask your miscellaneous questions if they're anymore.
Were any of the special use or the the permits that we discussed last time, we recommended to not approve those? Were any of those approved?
Good question. Okay, so it looks like there was one over there across the street from Pizza Hut. And then one over here on the west hand side. I don't believe either were approved or any.
And the reason why I'm asking is the, the information that you just gave us from Midland, Odessa, one of the things is they state is that the property in question must be 300 feet away from a church or a school. And they were using front door to front door, if it's across the street or along a property line, or if the property lines are adjacent. And so that one is, and that was the question is, one, the, they're adjacent to Sol Ross property. But I didn't realize this until later. There's a church from the sort of the end of that road, Church Road. So.
So I just actually believe that either of those got approved. And I apologize, it's taking a long time to load the minutes for council. But you are right. And we measured as far as the distance between the church and it was more than 300 feet.
But that was from door to door, not from property line, property line. And and they, and they were both approved.
Were they? Okay, yeah.
That's something you can edit in the ordinance. I mean, that's in some.
Right, that's.
And that's kind of what you would clarify in order to, if it was door from door or property adjacent to.
Right.
And that's kind of what we're trying to do with updating the ordinance is making it very clear what rules are, because right now there, there's a lot of gray in there. So it makes it hard for you to do your job. And it's also hard for us to do our job because when we're trying to tell people what they can and cannot do, there's not really any clear.
Which, which is another advantage to having these uniform ordinances.
Right.
So it's the same thing from city to city or anywhere in Texas. So have you, sorry, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, so how many now is that total for the city? Four, is that?
That's the max until one closes or gets shut down.
And so, so the board, yeah, voted against them, right? We voted to not approve them. The council then overwrote that and approved them.
Which they would have to do by super majority because there's a provision of state law that says you have to have a super majority to override a Kansas decision. But that didn't happen. She's right.
And they also put the minimum of 20 machines in that same meeting, right?
There was also an ordinance approved at that meeting, yes, that did award the the limit.
A minimum or maximum?
A maximum.
Were grandfathered it. And they, if anything happens to their machines, they can't replace it unless they're under the 20.
So the maximum is 20?
So everyone else read the ordinances from County?
I've just briefly.
Any discussion?
And I may, and I need to go back and 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 read through them again. There's a couple of things we could add that I noticed that other cities, I mean, I would like to talk to y'all about it that other cities have done. And I've, it may be in here and I just overlooked it. But one is that they must have transparent and uncovered windows and doors, which was really helpful for some other areas. And that may be in here. And then another one that I didn't see was that the applicant shall apply in person and the applicant shall be the owner of a game, the game room. Applicant must include a copy of a valid government issued ID and list of all owners with government issued IDs. And that just seemed to help. Is that, is it?
Because there could be.
Right, that was kind of what it was. There's an applicant and then there's an owner.
The owner of the property.
Right. And then the applicant, and that's how we do the background check. But then I think what happened last time is that we had the wife, the the, one of the, like the owner, the background check came back, it wasn't clear. So then the wife applied.
But apparently that's common.
Yeah.
Right, these businesses, which is kind of.
Right. I mean, I, I don't know if I can do that in other businesses though.
Salt queen's kind of fishy, but apparently that is accepted.
That's accepted.
Yeah, again, speaking with other cities, I brought that up and they have the exact same thing. And what happened, especially in the game rooms that. And what happens especially in the game rooms that get busted. If there is the owner operator, if they get convicted. Exactly, that's what they have. And even it's convoluted family relationship, but then someone else does it and they're still back in business.
We've kind of got to get smarter to some of their ways of doing things because they are way smarter than us on how to go around and get things done. I mean, they know the law. They know it very well.
Yeah, those are two great points. I agree with you. The other thing I would add is they need to have some kind of signage.
Right.
That's really strange. I've gone to all, at that time too. There's no signage right now. I mean, I was hesitant to make a suggestion because I don't want the city to again, involved in then determining what kind of signs businesses should have, you know. Minimum requirements and all, I mean, businesses should have whatever sign they want. But there should be some kind of rule that they have to have some, some kinds of signage, you know, on the door.
They usually don't stay in a spot too long, so I don't think they would.
There's one along the highway in Fort Stockton, drive by twice a month. And I think that's just the spray, like, I think it just might be spray paint.
That they put.
You might be. Might. Yeah. If we require a sign, we might.
Well, that just is tacky too, so I mean.
Yeah.
Cities don't want to see that kind of stuff, which we should think about putting that in there.
But I did hear the transparent uncovered doors. Yeah.
We really don't, I guess we don't have an ordinance and stuff like that on signs and.
No.
We do have ordinance on signs. You have to have a permit and they have to go through a permit. It's a a plan review process. So we can't make anybody get a sign unless you clearly state that in the ordinance, like when operated business has to have a sign. And then like, we don't know what type of sign they're gonna put up. It could be a piece of cardboard with some paint on it, you know? But it'd have to go through a permitting process. It'd have to be approved by the city.
We could probably, but we could put something in there. You can't spray paint the side of the building.
We can put in the.
Because that's a good point.
You can do something.
Because we might have something like what he's talking about.
Well, it has to go through a plan review, so it'd have to be accepted.
So do all businesses that put up signs go submit their signs for planner view? Isn't there, is there a high, there's a height requirement?
There's a height requirement, there's a lighting requirement.
Yeah.
The dark skies, but a lot of people put up business signs and they don't have permits.
What do we do, what do y'all do when somebody does that or, you know, especially with the dark skies and they, they put like a big bright marquee?
I'm, there's a problem with people that don't know, and that's one of the things that I was speaking with Megan, the city manager about is one of the things that I would like to help the community with is public service announcements. Because there's a lot of people that don't know the rules. And in our ordinance, you're not supposed to have a white backing with letters that are illuminated. Unless it's a trademark sign, so like Dollar General's trademark, it's a light background with a dark lettering. So if you don't know the ordinance and you want a business and then you have white backing with black lights and you put light bulbs in it, it's going to penetrate the sky. And it's going to affect our dark skies. So once they spend thousands of dollars on a sign that they've installed, you know.
Well, when they're pulling a permit.
They don't always.
Is there just like a permit in general, like for their business?
Yeah.
Is there a packet that we give?
There is, there's not usually a packet, so you don't need to have a permit to open up something that's not special use.
Just if it's a bill, like a building, I was thinking like building permit, like new building, you don't have to.
No, so if you want to open a shoe store or a furniture store or something like that, you don't need a special permit for that. And you just need to have landlord or buy the property and, you know. But it is your responsibility to find out if you have any permits that you need to pull for signage.
Or for construction.
Or for construction, if you're gonna remodel it, yeah.
Yeah.
But not everybody does that. So I think that the education is lacking in the community. Just even for basic things for, you know, removing a hot water tank, you're not supposed to do that without a permit. You're not supposed to have a permit. You blow up your whole block. So.
Yeah.
You know, there's just simple, basic things that people just don't know. They've been doing it forever. So it's something I would like to work with the new building official. Educate.
They're leasing the buildings for the game rooms from whoever, they're probably not going to want to invest in signage. Where the landlord may not even want something permanent.
And we can, I don't think we can actually ask them to do that unless you put specifically stated in the ordinance, it has to be identified as a game room somehow. Whether it's a sign at the door or whatever, I don't know.
Well.
I think it's twenty one and older or eighteen and older or something. I think they have to post that anyway, don't they?
Well, there's not the posted. None of the gaming room, but as far as landlords go, rent out commercial spaces, I mean, they expect that there's going to be signage put up. You know, for whatever, whoever rents their property, so that's not a big deal.
They expect it, but you don't require it.
Well, I can't say but all, I mean, I can speak for myself. I have a couple of commercial properties and, you know, whoever rents it, I mean. Yeah, so that's never been an issue. Paying signage up. But that's interesting about what you're saying about the age limit into the gaming rooms. I haven't seen any signs posted.
That might be something you could put into the ordinance, say they specifically state them. He was like, like a bar or something.
Yeah, it's supposed to have, or from one of these documents, I don't know which one, but I read that they have to have it. But I don't remember if I, I went into the one over here and I don't remember seeing it, but I could go back over there to see if they have all the proper, the windows. Abby said that this one over here doesn't have windows, you can see through.
Right, they have them blocked out, blocked out.
Yeah.
Are they like super duper tinted or just like you can't see them in at all?
They're tinted.
Something, yeah.
Yeah. Like the space that's across from Little Caesars.
And the oil is very black.
Yeah, those are tinted out. And when there was a game, gaming business located off the strip mall where the comic cleaners is, same thing.
It's still dark.
Yeah. It's very weird.
See weekly going on in there.
So those are good ideas.
I mean, because if they are transparent, you people, I would think would want to go. I mean, you wouldn't feel so uncomfortable with it all dark. Or covered. That's why I have.
I guess they just want it to be dark in there, like a movie theater or something, you know, because the games are all lit up. I mean, I could see if they were honestly why they'd want it dark in there, but if they're hiding something by black and not completely, I don't.
But even in those cases. Those businesses still have like information painted on the windows, you know.
Yeah.
Get whatever game room it is. Those are good points. So is it eighteen and older or twenty one and older?
I'm not sure.
I think it's eighteen. They've got to go back.
It's not gambling.
They can buy lottery tickets at eighteen, so I'm sure they can.
And then I, one of the other things I've read, if I've read it correct, or two of the other things was that there should not be a self shutting door between, so if, if let's say this was the game room and, or this is the, the building. And that part was the game room and this was like the lobby of the hotel. There should not be a self shutting door in between the two. There should be an open door that, I guess, you can freely walk back and forth. You know, it was in the packet that, again, if I read it correctly, that the employee of the game room must also be, be an employee of the business that is around it. So I'm not sure if I read that correctly. Quick. So I think that was a way of making sure that the owner of the building, so that owner of that business was also the one who had the game room, not subletting it out to somebody else. If that makes any sense.
This one says, I guess, this is the one from Hunter County. I think the phrase net person under the age of twenty one is allowed to play. I guess eighteen can still go in, but can't play. Or is that just for this particular, these people's ordinance? Which is not like a state thing, or is it?
Lost in the documents.
But I, I think that, yeah, all the research, thanks for doing that because it's, it'll definitely help us. And it would be really nice if, because you have places like Midland Odessa. Which is my understanding when I was doing a bit of research early on, like they had some serious issues with the game rooms and a lot of it was just being raided almost constantly. And then like San Antonio, as you mentioned, that one didn't really, that city didn't pop up. It's much larger. It's what, seventh largest city in the United States. But having those ordinances from people that have already gone, or cities that have already gone through this will help us and it'd be really nice to have that information give to us for one, but if like all these smaller towns were able to, to say, yeah, this one really worked well for us. Whoever else may end up having game rooms around or anywhere else.
Might be helpful to have comparable cities like this, because Midland Odessa is just totally different environment anyhow. I'm wondering if the other smaller cities like us are still having problems with drugs and prostitution.
Right.
So on and so forth.
It's an aura or a persona, because they're a bit smaller, but.
Yeah. We don't have. We have those problems here. I've never seen it.
Okay, why can't we reach out to them and see? If the, if we can get copies of their ordinances or and, yeah, we, we can do that.
Yeah.
Might be more comparable.
I couldn't, I couldn't get anyone to respond to my calls from Fort Stockton. So I don't know.
Not online.
I couldn't find it at the time I was doing research. But I'll look into that again.
Hey, because it's gonna have same issues as Midland Odessa, I think.
Van Harder doesn't have any.
They don't have any?
I'm there once, twice a week.
I don't know, maybe like Big Spring or somewhere that's not in the oil patch area might be.
But Van Harder has just, it's an ordinance on those, I'll check on it, they came up with.
Anyway, something.
I'll try to think of other cities.
Sure, smaller, smaller towns.
Because I'm just like wondering if maybe like about what I'm about to say. If we don't have those kind of problems, I mean, it'd be helpful to know if we do have those kind of problems in the game rooms that are already here. And if we don't have those kind of problems in our game rooms, maybe we're just thinking, you know, overthinking it or we've already got four, we can't have more than four. So what would be the next thing that we, or that could be wished for, just be to have less machines? I mean, what else is there to push for? If we're not really having any problems.
Well, you can't anticipate, right?
Right.
That's why like a lot of these, again, Midland Odessa, San Antonio, La Paz, so that's why they're pushing this uniformity ordinances. So no matter where you go in the state, you know, there's a framework. And as long as the businesses follow that framework, we've done our job, the community's needs have been addressed and then anything illegal, that's the, the police will take care of that, you know.
Do we know how many times that the game rooms here have been raided or shut down or temporarily shut? We know they have for illegal activity, but we don't know any details.
We have to ask the chief.
But there's lots of studies on, like, that people have done to independent groups, and maybe that's something we can read. Or look at at our next meeting about the the negative impacts of a community because directly associated with gaming rooms that are similar to these. Because of, you know, it's illicit activity that's just associated. And it's not, it's not just gambling, I mean, we all know.
I'd be interested to know what kind of problems they are actually.
I think it's a lot of the human trafficking drug.
Oh, right.
That human trafficking was a big, really problem.
Okay. Just, I mean, I'm glad that it's now we're at four, we can't have more. I mean, is that like set in stone or is that just until some, somebody else comes?
No, it's set in stone.
Okay.
So yes, can have less than four, but four is.
Right, right.
Yeah.
Right, and then the property lines are important because we have, you know, to rewrite that. Because right now it's door to door, so you could have one pop up across the street from the elementary school, but far enough away where it's not door to door, but you know, playground, like kids on the playground could.
Is that something we can suggest there to be a further distance if it does turn out to be door to door?
Or maybe we have property line, we could change it because it is door to door now, maybe we could, we could change it from property line.
Yeah, that, we can make the suggestions that you have to the city council, yeah. And if we have a proper framework, you know, support from other communities, that'll strengthen our argument.
That'd be something we'd want to go ahead and try to figure out is what is the least amount of space between them and something else, or do you think that the three hundred feet door to door is fine?
It's not fine. I mean, no, it's not fine. But then it didn't, you can playgrounds.
Yeah.
People outside, right, yeah, that's what.
Homes.
Yeah.
I mean, even home, it, I mean, to me, it wouldn't have to be a church or a school or whatever, whatever.
Rather, I mean, I would, I don't want one three hundred feet from my door.
So I guess the neighborhood. You know, we have to take into consideration if they're in the neighborhoods, like the one over there, over here.
Well, if it helps, I'll try to get more copies of ordinances from these other towns and then we can just lay them out and.
And then the studies, oh, maybe we can look at, because I know several people have emailed me their, you know, studies that they've come across.
So you can just send that to Gio and he can send it on to us. Does all that have to wait till the next meeting or can we start looking at things ahead of time?
If you all want to send me things that you want to share, I can share it with everybody. You just have to be cautious being a board member. By like so much, so.
Have to share with each other, it has to go through.
And it has to be like, you know, I mean, if, if we're just sharing documents from other cities, I don't see a problem with that.
Okay.
But once it does get closer to actually recommending changes to the city council. It would be best if you all download a copy of our ordinance, which you can do from our code of ordinances. And actually go in there and make the proposed changes. And send that to me so I can present it to the board. Because that way you will know exactly, you know, what you want, how you want it worded, et cetera. It would just be easier. If y'all were to download that Word document of the code, I can show you how, if y'all want. And then just exactly where you want things entered, let me know.
Okay.
Now, as far as some of these other little things like the signs on the games and stuff like that, how is that, how does that get enforced? Somebody has to call and say, hey, they don't have signs on their thing?
Yes, yeah. I mean, if, if it was to be put in the ordinance, is that what you're saying?
I mean, just how do we know if they're not doing what they're supposed to?
Who's enforcing it?
Who's enforcing?
I mean, them having a sign?
No, the ordinance, yeah, yeah, whatever.
Enforcing whatever ordinance is, is in place.
PD and building services work together for random inspections. So we go and we do random inspections as well as checking to make sure that the, the reported machines are only twenty and that they are the ones that they are, they are have issued with the city. So we do, we just recently did one of maybe a month ago or less, PD and I went out and we did went to everyone to make sure that they were.
You get to do. Okay, that's what I was wanting, okay, so recently.
Well, soon it won't be me, but right now it's me.
It's not like somebody calls instead, you know, because.
If there's a complaint, yeah, if a complaint PD will, will be the ones responding.
The one right over here got closed down because we had somebody call me. I answered the phone, I was answering the phone at that time. And they were paying, they were supposed to have paid out this person eight thousand dollars and then they gave him a pound or something. So they called to report them, so we shut them down, I believe, was PD. Based off that phone call. So it happens both ways.
Yeah.
And they're, and just that they're not supposed to pay out any money.
Yeah.
Right.
Right, so that's, it's just.
It was right here, Catty Corner.
Right.
Yeah.
And that place was consistently had alcohol bottles just spread out all over that, all the time around that building. Cuz I was always getting complaints from celebration liquor on that one.
That they were outside?
The, all the empty bottles and liquor bottles and everything else were outside around that building, it was going into their parking lots cuz people were parking into it.
I remember that, and that one was over there, yeah. But I, I mean, I guess they don't have any control, people are drinking outside of the building, they're just not allowed to have it inside, right? According to these.
I don't know, there's probably some, well, that's an interesting thing too, they.
I mean, cuz you can't drink outside the liquor store, the convenience store, cuz they have signs saying you can't do it, so.
But I think what it was is they were getting within the distance to the liquor store, which CNBC would have been involved in something like that. And, uh, they were actually going in there and buying from them. They were going with it, I don't, I never did hear about that.
You see those little bottles everywhere?
Like a little bottle?
Yeah, they're everywhere.
I see him everywhere too, on the ground.
Even, even around the bars.
Yeah, somebody, somebody always throws them out, I look next to the creek, so people are always throwing stuff.
They have a problem with them going into a sewer system, that's why you have a lot of the backups. Flush them down the toilet.
To hide it from somebody, probably.
Yeah, I think it's the college, that's what they. And there's like clothes and little bottles in there.
Pairs of pants.
No idea.
TSA, like, the things to not flush down the toilet.
That would be a good thing.
You just think common sense would.
Maybe they just need one of those trash cans and some liquor bottles, little ones. Nobody says nothing, nobody knows.
My mind just goes to why somebody would flush their pants, like, did something bad happen in those pants or? You know, like.
I don't think I'd wanna know the story.
It could be so many things. That's crazy.
So you all just want to go and, um, kind of look up some more items and. Have another discussion about this or.
Yes, definitely.
And like I said, if you all want, um, a tutorial on how to go and download that specific portion of the code. Our charter does require that, um, any ordinance changes were, uh, either. Highlight or draw attention to additions and then strike through window missions. So typically, if you wanna make changes, uh, you can download that document. And then highlight anything you add, strike or anything you take out. Uh, that make it easiest, so I don't have to go through and, uh, edit it. But once y'all are ready and y'all make and y'all vote on an action item, then I will send it to the city council later.
Yeah, sure, you know, I think right now we're still in the research phase. Once you've agreed to whatever you want, then we'll, yeah.
Sounds good. I was thinking, when you, when they are ready, you could probably share screen and show them exactly what you're. You know, really share a screen on the Word document so you can show me exactly what you're talking about, so they have a visual.
Right, I think, yeah, when we updated the, or tried to make the recommendation to update the, the limit of machines, I think we have that. In our packet, some, or one of the package, or we highlighted and we wrote the language. And I'm still new to learning this, I joined the board like late twenty twenty. Or early twenty-one.
So if y'all look up here, um. I can get it. Anyways, you would just hover over here on the government tab, click on code of ordinances. It's gonna be right, right there. And then, once you do that, you've, you've taken to our code of ordinances, you just navigate to that section of the code. It's in chapter ninety taxation, under coin operated machine establishments. And what you'll do is you just click this little Word icon right here. Once you do that, you'll see this menu and it will, uh, allow you to check what, which ones you want to download. And in fact, you would do this whole section right here, coin operated machine establishments, click download. And a Word document will pop up with the most recent version of this code, so. Any questions?
It's pretty straightforward, thank you. Uh, before we move on, I just personally, I'd like to find out. Oh, y'all, what did you think about the suggestion of having a, a fire marshal or building inspector? Being responsible for determining number of games in a business? As opposed to having a hard number?
We did talk about that one time, and I think that one of the reasons why we decided not to, because then somebody could build like a. Amusement park of game, you know, so if we limit it by, if you have. Five thousand square feet or three thousand square feet, you can only, you can have one machine per whatever. Then you could end up having somebody that would have a hundred. Right, so maybe that's, I think, why we went to the limit. Or the maximum amount was because of that, but I do like the fire marshal inspected it for safety and just wish they should be doing.
Didn't we do like machines per square foot, so even if they have?
No, we just, we just had a max of, what was it, ten or twenty?
Right, right, it's, yeah, I think.
Would be nice to have something to back up our reasoning for wanting a limit.
That's why these cities are putting in the hands of the fire marshal or the building inspector, so it's up to them when they do their, uh, safety inspection. They'll have a formula for.
Yeah, but you could still do, um. Have an order, within the ordinance set a maximum. And still have the fire marshal.
The maximum is twenty machines, but you.
A room can only hold ten, then it's just gonna be ten and not twenty. And we could look, what's the current maximum, you said thirty? Or, or the, the one that was grandfathered in?
Oh, that one had forty.
Forty, so, um.
Really? That's good to know, so she said that they just, uh, went down to the twenty. They technically weren't required to, but that's very.
So keep the max at twenty and then, as, and then if the fire marshal says, you know, oh, this room can only have ten, then it just should be ten. Somebody write that in.
So how? So the fire marsh just has to come in, in the beginning, or is that included with the random?
There's not a random inspection for fire, so how, how something like that would happen is we would go in and do what's called a certificate of occupancy. So that's where the fire marshal or the building official would be the one inspecting. And we would go in and make sure that the electrical was up to code, that the plumbing was up to code, that there's proper egress for, in, in case of an emergency. Um, there's fire extinguishers and smoke detectors for an occupied space, it's pretty much saying that the space is safe. So we do that for our short-term rentals, we do that for, um, long-term rental turnovers and any new businesses established that need, needs utilities. So, uh, coin operated business that's opening up would be one of those, so they would get, um, certificate of occupancy. So with what Michael is saying is what you could possibly say in your written ordinance is that. Twenty is the maximum unless otherwise stated based off of the inspection of a fire marshal. So if the space is too small and it can't fit twenty without it being a problem for egress or for, for fire safety, then they would have to limit it. To a lesser number based off of the, it would be the final decider if it's gonna be twenty or less. Is kinda, I think, what he's, or kind of, is that what I'm interpreting? You're, you'd hold on to the twenty, but it could be less.
Which would be important for a new, a new one trying to pop up somewhere. A smaller space, right?
And so the one that was closed down over here, they got raided, uh, do you know how many times it had issues or had been visited?
Oh, yeah, they could probably ask for a, a public information request for their next meeting though, right?
Yeah, we can find it out, uh, we'd have to just ask the chief and see what.
Well, somebody had a record for fraud too on that deal, if I'm remembering correctly.
Yeah, I, I, it's been actually a couple of years, I'm not too sure.
Seems like that was.
Can we go ahead and put in a request to the chief for the next meeting?
Sure, but specifically, what were, what do you want? Just for that building?
No, we want all of them, we want the chief to, uh. Uh, give us a statistics of how many times the different places have been raided, what they've been raided for, what's the average a year?
And maybe public complaints. If there are any.
Okay, should we move on? Okay. Uh, we don't have any action items. Okay, so, um. Uh, board member comments, I'll start with you, if you have anything to say or.
I just wanted to thank Jessica for putting this together, I'm, for bringing up the ordinances from you, the process. These are very important things, and thanks, Epi, for your input.
Uh, the same, yeah, I think this is gonna be a good step forward, so.
Yeah, I think it's, thank you for, for the input on this, I've been wanting one of these for several years, something to this effect, cuz this. Playing commission has been. Very. Not knowledgeable on so many things, so many things. And we just played it by ear most of the time, I mean, it's like consistently.
Irie, thank you, thank you, I think we have a really good board here. So thank you for, thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much, this is a great manual, Geo, thanks. Okay, uh, if there is not anything else, uh, I'll call this meeting adjourned.